All right, it's six o'clock. I think we still have some folks coming in here. Did we want to, uh, there he is. All right, good deal. So we got Lucas. All right, let's see here. All right, uh, we'll do our call to order, the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, Wednesday, January fifteenth. Sherry, I don't know if you're out there, but can we get a quick roll call?
Chair Trent?
Oh, Ida, sorry. Thank you, Ida. Yeah, here?
Vice Chair Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Chesley?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
And Commissioner Graham is absent. Cool, all right. So pledge allegiance, Judy, you want to lead us?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so let's, uh, let's review the meeting, or the minutes from the past meeting. Does anybody have any changes? Meeting minutes. I don't have any.
Wait, can we first, approval of the agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Do we need to get a roll call for that? We don't, do we?
No, you typically ask, is there any changes to the agenda?
Is there any changes to the agenda?
Typically say no.
Okay, yeah, yeah, so we're good. Yeah. Reproval, all right. Where do we, yeah, I'm sorry, where, where do we approve the minutes from the prior meeting? Oh, there we go, I apologize. All right, so I guess this portion of the meeting, we want to open it up for public communications before we get into the consent items. So these are item, these are items set aside for the public to speak on matters that are not on the agenda, and they can be briefly discussed, but we cannot respond. And I have one person for general public comments. Mr. Miley?
Maybe two.
Maybe two.
Hello. For those of you who are interested in the booms that are going on. The Vandenberg Space Force Base Public Comment Period for their future launches has a deadline of January twenty-seventh. If you need to get the address for public comments, you can type in Vandenberg Public Comment. The Ojai Valley News has an article and the address for their emails. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have one more public comment. Larry Steinhold?
Good morning, uh, good evening, excuse me. Larry Stein Gold, Ojai. I think we should all take a minute to thank the fact that we're not Pacific Palisades and we're not Paradise. I don't know whether to thank God, the weather, planning. But I really think that you should take it upon yourselves this evening as responsible for Title IX, to do whatever you can do to propose anything you can, whatever you can think of, that the city council can act upon, that we can do today, tomorrow, next month, next year, upon sale, upon releasing, upon demolition, whatever it is, to get our city up to a point where at least we got a fighting chance. Okay, I mean, you're planning. Lucas is community development. It's the only thing we got. So propose everything and anything that you can possibly think of under your controls, and let city council deal with it at that point, so they can take care of it. Whether it's moving thirty feet to, from ten feet to thirty feet for ADUs, I know that's Title X or something. Whatever it is, but whatever you can do, okay, because if you don't do it, quite honestly, you shouldn't be where you are. Because we don't have time for more studies, more committees, more nonsense, more BS. Look, Fire Safe has done a great job, and let them handle it. Maybe this is not the venue for that. Anyway, and that's, please do what you have to do tonight, next, in special meeting, do whatever you have to do, but get it moving, so we don't agonize over, we're not here next year going, oh, we could've, would've, should've. Here's an opportunity to do it, to just do it, okay? Just get it done, okay? And then my second question morphed through you to the, to Lucas. When is the Phase One environmental being done on the Public Works Yard?
I mean, that's not something we can necessarily address, right?
No, but you can answer it.
Not an item on the agenda, but the Phase One has been done.
And has it recommended, is it public?
I cannot speak specifically on it, it is not, it is not on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
But I can say that it has been done, yes.
Oh, well, it's, my guess is, and I assume it's.
There are public meetings coming.
Oh, good.
Regarding the project in the coming months.
Will that document be public?
Uh, that I don't know.
The Phase One?
Yes, yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
All studies will be, will be public.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Great, thank you, even the cost of the sidewalk?
Estimate for the cost of the sidewalk.
But please, as planning and as community development, you have to take care of tomorrow, because that's what planning is.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
And, and correction, Title X, not Title IX, correct?
Title X is zoning, Title IX is building, building materials and, and construction related, yes.
Correct, awesome, okay, cool. All right, any more public comments? Anybody online? Yeah, you're, you're talking regarding the public hearing item, correct? No, you're public comment, you want public? So this is not an item related to the agenda? Okay, yeah, come on, uh, you want to submit a card, or do you have a card? You did?
They, they submitted a card, there should be.
Oh, okay, I see, Dulienne, is that correct? Okay, I apologize, Delaney. Oh, I do see, okay, I apologize, I see it now.
My name is Delaney Labarre, I live at 206 South Blanche, and I am a friend of the Cabin Village Project. I would like to clear up a couple of misconceptions. The residents of South Blanche, who are in favor of the public works lot for permanent supportive housing, have been touted as being NIMBY, quite the opposite. First of all, the Cabin Village will still be in our backyard, it's just moving over about a hundred and some odd feet. So they'll still be walking to town on our street, nothing will change, we've had no problems. I've been, I've gotten to know a number of members in the community, it's all good. What will change is that all thirty, not just twenty, of the vetted and established people who are living in tents will have the ability to have a heated, secure room within walking distance of downtown services. Contrary to what we heard of, this doesn't belong in a residential neighborhood, this is a residential development. So yes, it does belong in a residential neighborhood, and this one is surrounded and screened by native vegetation. Kathy Nolan's firm has been contracted to landscape the grounds and the privacy wall with native plants, and when she's done, it will be beautiful in Ojai's style. Equally important is that the developer dignity moves is being held to high sustainability eco-standards of design, systems, and materials. We will soon see architectural drawings. I'll close by saying that I know we have some very good neighbors, yet I am saddened that a group of property owners blocks away, who will not see Cabin Village from their properties, are using their power to try to relocate the project, saying the residential project doesn't belong anywhere near them. Let's be clear, there is no relocating to be had. For months, the Board of Realtors have been searching and have not found a suitable substitute, period. So this is the time, this is the place. We have, the state of California is watching, they want us to, to succeed at this, so they can use it as a template for other small municipalities. They gave us twelve point seven million dollars to do this. We have the money, the site, the developer, the support team, the community, who needs us to build something tasteful and safe, that can be a point of pride for Ojai. Let's do it.
Thank you. All right, Richard?
So my name is Richard Shack, I'm in the fifteenth year of our Ojai-Ohana Community Support Group, which I founded. It's a very small group, but we were very active in the community, even before I moved to Ojai, which was twelve years ago. Tonight, I'm urging members of the Planning Commission, City Council, and all others involved with the future cabins project to vigorously and in a more amplified way state your support as individuals for the Public Works Yard location and for moving forward on an expedited manner diligently with the due process, of course. Today, I was included in a meeting, which was led in part by the city manager, where the Cabin Village project was discussed. The city itself, the managers, commissioners, council and boards, and all of the individuals involved at all of the levels are under attack via a concerted effort to delay the project or to shut it down completely. On November twelfth, the Ojai Valley Family Shelter presented a plea asking the council to reconsider. The comments included misdirection of the issues and concerns referencing an unhoused individual and a narrative allegedly based on quotes by that unhoused woman. These quotes, by all accounts, were a fabrication. Individuals in this room tonight, as well as journalists, activists, people who lived near the unhoused woman, will attest to that this kind, unhoused elderly lady did not and would never have said what was stated publicly then in a city council meeting by the shelter director. We feel that the shelter director herself is not credible as a representative of unhoused services and in the big picture community, who are truly acting in good faith to help all unhoused in the valley. We urge all of you who are tasked with decision-making in this to disregard the shelter's disingenuine pleas to reconsider, as well as anyone else who is attempting to delay or cancel this project for their own selfish reasons. The public good must be the priority, and we know that the city council does not have to take your recommendation, but we hope that they will. That is your mandate, the public good. Thank you for your kind consideration.
Thank you, Richard. All right, anybody online?
No.
No, okay. Now we'll move on to consent items. Looking at the, the meeting minutes from our last meeting, I don't have any changes. Does anybody have any items that they want to discuss on the last meeting?
I move approval.
Second.
All right, can we get a roll call?
Bennett?
Yes.
Chesley?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes. All right, so let's move on, disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts regarding the, uh, the item that we're going to discuss today. So I did meet with the applicant prior to the December fourth meeting, I haven't had any meetings with anyone prior, after that. Familiar with the location, that's it.
Same for me, I have been to the site prior to December fourth. The only contacts I have had since then is with staff.
I had been to the site many times before December fourth. And I attended the meeting on December fourth and have been back to the site once on my own, just to look around a bit and, and get a physical sense of where elements are. And, but I had no contact with anyone at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I met with the applicant before the previous meeting and met with Planning Director before this meeting.
Yes, yeah, and I'll call that out, I did meet with Planning Director as well, staff. Okay, cool, all right. So let's move on to the public hearing item, continued from December fourth, the design review permit, the conditional use permit, and the amendment to the CUP and the treaty permit. And Lucas or Mara?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll start this off, and then I'll pass it off to tomorrow, Principal Planner, and then I think Chris Kenzori has a PowerPoint presentation as well. So it'll be two PowerPoint presentations, but I wanted to kind of set the, the table, as you all know, we met regarding this item right before Christmas, the holiday season, and from that, we saw a couple different components and pieces that the commission had questions on, as well as the community. So we went back and, and kind of, kind of dissected those pieces, and from that, you're seeing revisions to the plans themselves. But I want to make sure that we're focusing on two things. One is really focusing in on the pieces that the commission had asked for clarification on. And the second piece is making sure that we're all aware that we're, we're working within the boundaries of the findings. The findings for the development review permit, the findings for the conditional use permit, as well as the treaty permit. So those are the two pieces that I want to make sure that we're all thinking about when we're asking questions, clarifications, having comments, that they're staying within those boundaries, okay? And both Mara and Chris will be going over the, the four pieces, the revisions that have taken place since the December fourth meeting. So their design and noise, and well, I'll, I'll let Mara go over that in, in terms of specifics, as well as, as Chris. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mara.
Thank you, and thank you Chair and Commissioners. So we're here again discussing the winery located at eight twenty-one West Ojai Avenue, and the applicant is requesting your review and consideration of the design review permit, amendment to the existing conditional use permit, and a treaty permit for the renovation and addition to the existing winery and structure. Reviewed on December fourth, as a couple of you have already mentioned this evening, the Planning Commission continued this item to tonight with specific direction for staff and the applicant to consider alternatives to proposed architectural style enassing, general noise concerns, review conditions of approval for other venues regarding their limitations on events, and also consider alternative locations and/or further screening for parking. So staff's going to talk about smart architecture within the city, and also the review conditions of approval for other venues. And the applicant will then be speaking to you as part of a, as part of the presentation prior to questions. Of course, you can ask questions whenever you want, but it'll be part of the presentation process. They'll be talking also about the architecture enassing, but they'll be talking about the changes that have been made, as opposed to the architecture within the community, which I'm going to speak to. They'll be speaking to noise concerns, and then they will be speaking about the parking and screening.
It stuck?
It was, but got it now.
All right.
Thank you, thank you. So the following slides are going to be of farmhouse and similar architectural styles that are within the community. Here you'll see one thirteen South Montgomery, the art center. We have a vertical board and batten. I'm going to go through them rather quickly to just give it, just giving examples, of course, you can always stop me. This is a, um, a spot-on example of farmhouse slash barn architecture, and with the metal si, metal roof and also horizontal siding. Here's the secondary building on site, which also, I guess the first building for walkers had the corrugated metal, and this has a metal sheeting. And again, we've got the, I believe there's the horizontal siding. Here, three oh three Lyon, and these are a little hard to see from here, and I'm going to go, I can see them a little clearer on my screen. We've got board and batten. And this, two thirteen Montgomery, has a horizontal wood siding. Notice the roof lines as well. Five oh one oak and three oh eight Lyon. We have more ba, board and batten, I believe, on Lyon and the horizontal siding on oak. Here, three oh eight North Montgomery and three ten North Montgomery, we have more examples of horizontal siding on both structures. Four ten East Oak and five oh five East, horizontal on both structures, horizontal siding. And again, look at the, or notice the different, the different roof lines. We have vertical and horizontal mixture of siding on five oh seven East Oak and horizontal at, siding at five thirteen East Oak. And here at nine sixty-seven East Ojai Avenue, board and batten. So, let's see. So I wanted to show you these slides, there are many more examples within the city, this was just a, a quick drive-through to get you some examples to, to show, and we've got, and through these examples was a mixture of commercial and residential uses.
And I don't know if I missed it, but the, their design does not, it's not board and batten, correct? It doesn't look like it.
No, it is, there, there's a siding that we can describe later on, when we have the presentation from the applicant.
Okay, all right.
So now on to comparing the different event venues. We did some research and gave you information in your packets, reg, from the Ojai Rancho Inn, Hotel El Roblar, and also the Capri Hotel, and staff wanted to make sure it was noted that the, these venues that we compared with, with this one for conditional use permits for outdoor events are motels or hotels, and they have little or no outdoor event space and often use their required parking areas. And once they're using their required parking, they have to have off-site parking arrangements and agreements that they're required to meet, that they're required to, in order to meet the standards. Not only for the site, but all of the additional people that are on site for the event. The events, these venues, very specifically, and we all know they've been here at the Planning Commission, they're adjacent to residential uses. And then lastly, these venues have incurred complaints regarding noise, hours of operation, parking, and those complaints are what have led to the very detailed conditions of approval that they've all had to meet. The venue that you're looking at this evening is a restaurant slash winery. It's in and of itself an event venue. We've kind of talked about this before, whether it's a birthday party, a work party, anniversaries, reunions. It's, it's a venue for those types of, of uses, as well as being a, a winery.
Mara?
Yes.
May I ask a question, or should I hold it?
Um, I guess it depends if it's a quick question or if it's a dis.
Did the Topa Topa Winery have any complaints during their events?
I'm going to turn that over to Lucas.
From a co-compliance standpoint, there weren't any complaints that were received, at least ones in which we had to monitor noise or to the degree that we've seen with other events. I know that there had been previous comments that came in at the December fourth meeting saying that there had been concerns regarding noise, regarding traffic, those types of situations. Those didn't come through co-compliance for us to address on a site basis, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
Also, a point of clarity, these motels were originally designed as motels, they were not designed as event spaces, correct?
That's correct, hence not having the location for them. If they have a small outdoor area that they're using, it, it wasn't initially for events. They were, they were motels, yes.
Yeah, and there was additional concerns from the general public regarding expanding those uses to include events, which is a reason why these conditions applied. Is that correct?
That's, that's true, that's, those are additional reasons. So the applicant, in a moment, is going to speak to revisions, I, I'm just going to repeat what I said and maybe a little bit more. They're going to speak to the revisions made to the plans, and the plans are included in your packet. And let's see, the applicant is going to speak to the noise concerns, as well as concerns that were brought up at the last meeting regarding parking location and screening, and, and that's it, I'd like to introduce, oh, just a moment.
Just to button it up before I have Chris come up and, and if we can transition to his PowerPoint presentation. A couple of things that I think is, are important to, to kind of distinguish the, the proposed use that you have before you, but really is an established use that's being re-applied, but also expanded. I think that's, it's pretty clear that the applicant is wanting to do something that the previous property owner was looking to do, just ran out of, I would say, steam to a certain degree. There was initial preliminary discussions about, about moving in that direction, just ran out of steam and sold it back, obviously to Chris and Ojai Valley Inn and Spa. Additionally, I think it's also important that we not focus so much on what had been done in the past, because those were all kind of on a case-by-case basis, but also on a case-by-case basis with the residential uses in mind in close proximity.
Correct, yeah.
That's not necessarily the case here, there, the residential uses are still there, but they are not next door. They are within reasonable distance, but they are not next door. When we're looking at a distance piece, the ones that we're describing that Mara had spoken about are next door, meaning a budding. So there's, there is a lot of care and concern that goes into those conditions to ensure that they're being a good neighbor. Not saying that that's not necessary here, but I would say from the degree standpoint that we had held these previous sites to is not in the same category of what we're talking about here tonight. So I just wanted to clarify that. I know Chris is going to come up and give a presentation, as well as the architect, so I leave it to them.
And I think it's worth noting, piggybacking off what Lucas said, the other sites, I believe all three of them had complaints to the city where action was taken and the city had to intervene, which we don't have here, which is an important distinct, uh, point to distinguish.
The one that did not receive complaints, Hotel El Roblar is not a fair one, because they weren't open. But we also recognize the close proximity with residential, so it was only appropriate that we take those measures and do a litmus test every year, and potentially scale it back as a good neighbor. Or at least review it every year. That's a part of their conditions.
Well, I mean, where the motels are, they're neighbors.
No, I mean, El Roblar.
El Roblar.
It's an interesting example, there's not really residents for like, at least a block or something.
It's mixed use around it.
Uh-huh.
From a, from a zoning standpoint, but there, and we've talked about this, mixed use for, for, and I understand why, mixed use in Ojai, typically mixed use, village mixed use in this case, looks to take residential out of the, like, single-family residential out of the equation, that is quite the op- That is quite the opposite here. Instead, it's saying, you're residential, single-family, you can stay and maintain your use.
Yeah, it's a unique section. It's, you know, commercially zoned, and its neighbor is the Ojai Valley Inn, and the other neighbors are commercial, you know. Across the street is a school, and then another commercial building. There is, I think, one small residential house in there, but I think it's down the road a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, there's residential directly to the west.
Yeah, and I know with the El Roblar, there was that apartment complex that was close by. There was also another, you know, the World Academy, I think that was being looked at as a residential use as well.
At the time, yes, absolutely.
Okay, yeah, that was good context, I appreciate that. Also, a point of clarity, because this was brought up during some of the emails that we received. The CUP does go with the land, correct? Correct. So, the existing CUP does apply, and it is still valid.
Correct.
Okay, just making sure. Okay, cool. All right, are we having Chris come up now, or, oh, awesome. Thank you, Chris. Hi.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thanks for having us back.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, as Mara and Lucas both said, you know, we, since the last meeting, we took the time, both Sylvia and I, to address some of the primary concerns that were brought up, not only by commissioners here, but also by citizens and local neighbors. So, we sort of distilled it into these four different aspects that we're going to walk through. First was, we studied the parking, potential movement of that, and considered additional screening. Two was, the design of the west facade. We received some feedback, I can't remember who exactly said that the west side looked a little bit warehouse-looking or the massing was a little large. Third was just general noise concerns, so we did add some mitigation there that we're going to walk through. And then lastly was the bike path crossing, the material and safety kind of aspects to that. So, the first topic is the parking itself. If we can advance. If you recall previously, you know, the parking's along Ojai Avenue, and there was a 36-inch fence that was, so the way that the layering goes when the graph actually shows up, there's a 36-inch fence and then there was a hedge. So, what we did first is we went ahead and we raised the wooden fence to the highest allowable per code height, which is 42 inches. That was the easy thing. Then we also moved the entire parking, everything back, which is to the south, that allowed us four more feet to add an additional hedge. So, we're proposing a laurel hedge. We were thinking to plant it at a six-foot level and maintain it at approximately seven to eight feet. So, you have all these layers of masking that is going to be put in place that really should hide the parking lot from the, from the street completely.
Quick question on that. We had some comments regarding the headlights shining on Ojai Avenue. So, having that hedge will help dampen that, correct?
Well, both, the fence is solid and then the hedge as well.
Oh, it's solid.
So, you've got two, yeah, so as soon as we can get to the graph.
All right. Didn't notice that.
It illustrates all the different layers.
I know we're having some technical issues, so I appreciate the understanding, the patience. I didn't see it, what page is that on, the fence? What are you looking for?
What are you looking for?
The new fence, proposed.
Fence?
The height? Yeah, takes, okay, there we go, we kind of got something up there.
Okay, so, we talked about the wooden fence, so we went to the maximum, proposed 42 inches in height. We shifted that four feet down south to allow for this landscape hedge to be planted. And then, also, we extended this hedge all the way down to the east end of the parking, because we received feedback that any westbound traffic on Ojai Avenue would actually view straight into this parking lot. So, we went ahead and we added that all the way around. So, if you advance to the next slide. Yes.
There we go, look at that.
This is maybe not the best graph, the next one's a little bit better, but this will show you in the light lines that, first of all, the existing oak trees, of course, is layer one. Then you have the bike path. Then you have the wooden fence. Then you have this new hedge. And then you also have this line of shrubs, which kind of appears like trees right here. And then, wrapped all the way around, that half-circle is the green hedge, as you can see, it's kind of in a striped. So, you're masked from both sides. All directions, you're not looking at the parking.
Chris, is that semicircle on the upper right-hand corner, is that, what is that? Is it to drive around?
Just for a turnaround, just like for cars to easily access to turnaround, exactly.
Yeah, I make that way they don't want the backup. Chris, the hedge is in front of the fence, is that right?
Sorry, it's behind the fence.
It's on the parking, it's on the parking side.
Yes.
And that's a solid fence up front.
So, it's a solid fence.
And you said that fence goes all the way to the sign, all the way to the Ojai Valley Inn sign?
No, it goes the entire length of the parking spots.
Oh, okay, okay.
Then, but the hedge continues and goes all the way around that half-circle.
Got it, okay, thank you. Cool, all right.
Any questions on the?
Yeah, on what, what kind of material are you guys looking for on the?
Yeah, if you actually go up two more, it's the same siding that we intend to use on the building itself.
Oh, got it.
So, you can kind of see right there, you know, that's 42 inches and then the hedge.
Chris, while you're holding that siding, I received a, we all received, I think, a message from Renee Roth, and she was concerned about fire. And I'm wondering if, is that straight-up wood? Or is that something that would indeed be fireproof?
Let me have the architect speak to that.
Okay.
This material is currently proposed to be wood, just straight-up wood, as you mentioned, but behind the siding, that is going to be only the facade of the building, we are proposing to add a layer of 5/8 type X gypsum board, that is fire-treated material, so that the, even if the wood had to burn, it could not go past that layer. So, that's actually one of the requirements of Chapter 78 of the Building Code, that one of the measures to comply with the fire requirements, it's either using fire-treated wood or add this extra layer of treated material, treated gypsum, to protect the building.
Thank you.
Protect the structure.
But that's not on the fence proposal.
It's not on the fence proposal.
Okay, gotcha. So, the fence proposal is straight wood?
Yes.
All right, got it, okay.
And just as a reminder, we, you know, there is a masonry block wall there. We considered extending that, but you really can't because of the tree, the tree roots. Okay, the next topic was building modifications. That was specifically to address the comments of the massing. So, the previous design proposed the west facade to be a linear wall as part of the main building addition. And we're going to show you some visuals that give you a little bit better idea. The modified design proposes a lowered roof and indentations into the wall of the west side of the building to reduce the perception of volume. Lastly, the new indentations in the building walls create areas for additional parking, or, excuse me, additional planting, so we can put trees and more plant material to just soften the look and feel of the entire building.
How many parking places does that reduce? The original parking lot is going to have the trash, which takes out some parking, plus the landscaping that you just mentioned. Do you know how many parking places go away because of that?
No, it didn't change the parking count, actually. We just, we took square, we modified square footage out of the building. So, there was no change to the parking, total parking spaces.
Okay.
Okay, so, and, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm going to get in here. I, from a previous conversation, I know that Commissioner Murphy wasn't actually talking about the parking calcs from the changes in the building, from these recent revisions. She's talking about parking in general, on the west side of the building, what was existing and what's proposed. Am I correct?
Yes, you are. Sorry.
I think we, what, did we just reduce by? Yeah, we removed five total parking spaces to allow for the move of the trash refuge to go over there.
Okay, and the landscaping over there did not take any parking away?
It did not.
Yeah, okay.
I think I'm going to ask Sylvia to walk through the architectural changes and then also walk through the 3D images.
Thank you. So, as Chris and Mara were mentioning earlier on, one comment was about the west elevation of the building, looking like warehouse and being imposing. So, we went back and looked at that facade, and what we did, we actually broke up that elevation and the overall volume of the addition, because that comprised all the addition that we are proposing, to make it look like more a composition of buildings, rather than one big building. So, as you can see on these elevations, and Mara, even if you want to skip to the next one, so this is how the building used to look like, and if you go to the next one, and this is how the building is proposed to look like. So, you can see that starting from the roof line, what we did, we actually, starting from the north facade, we took the north facade and broke it up into two looking-like buildings. So, one, that is the taller one, that would be this one, mimics exactly the existing building in proportions, in height and width. So, it's almost a replica of the existing building with a lean-to roof attached to it, like, it actually happens already on the existing side, even if it's a smaller scale, the lean-to, but we already have that element. And then, we extended that throughout the west facade, keeping these roofs that are lower and keeping only the middle volume as a taller volume. So, again, screen, sort of screens, but the height gets concealed by all these other roofs that are around and run around the west elevation. Doing that, we also reduced the size of the mechanical well. We went from approximately 57 feet to 43 feet. So, we tried to make that facade and all that volume look smaller. And again, we have the main volume that matches exactly like on the other side, and then the indentations that Chris was talking about, that are proposing to be the in-ground or raised planters to add masking to the west elevation. Doing that, we also took the wall where the entry is supposed to be and shift that towards the east as well, and add planting in front of that as well. So, trying to create this visual interest on the elevation and creating movement on the facade to make it look less massive than what it was originally.
Appreciate that. Now, just a point of clarity, on the existing facility, it is 22.2 feet tall?
Correct.
And the proposal is?
So, the, starting from the front, if we start from the north elevation, the main volume of the north elevations, that's exactly 22 foot tall, 22.2 inches tall, exactly like on the other side. Then, only the back volume where the mechanical well is, that's 23 and 7. So, we are a foot and a half higher only on the back volume.
Only on the back?
Yes.
All right. Okay, cool, thank you.
And then, again, this is another view from the back, showing how the whole building got broken up.
So, just another quick question. So, on the east side, there was no, there's no changes to the east side? That's still, that's, remains the same as you had originally designed?
Correct.
Okay.
That is the existing building with a porch around it.
Got it. So, modifying the existing building slightly to put in a porch on that side, and then the real big change is going to be on that west side building, and that's where you're building in that extra architectural design to break up the mass.
Yes. And again, we looked into trying to make something that complements what's there existing. That's why the idea of making the front facade looking like two buildings, two identical buildings, with a connector that connects, and then just adding towards the back.
Right, okay.
Thank you. Okay, noise. So, the most significant change to the design was to add additional fencing, really responding to the neighbors that are, that we, you know, shared the road with on Country Club. We took a look at that back wall, and if you actually go to the next slide, I have two arrows that show you this 400 linear foot new fence that is going to be installed in green, all the way across. And it's six feet tall, so it's a good size of fence, and will provide for additional noise mitigation. Also, there's two berms that we raised slightly as well, just to help a little bit more with the noise and containing noise in that area. But, this is a pretty large addition that we thought would really help with noise mitigation to the local neighbors.
What's the fence?
The fence is right on the bottom left there.
The material, sorry?
It's also the same wood that we're doing on the siding and the other fence as well.
I apologize, in that design you had, the wood connects to the structure?
The, there's a masonry wall that's in kind of pink there on the bottom left.
Oh, I see, okay.
So, it picks up there and then it continues all the way over. Again, we weren't able to do masonry because of the trees.
Right, okay. But that green, I'm looking at that one green section on the left, I apologize. It's on the west side, but is it connecting, is that a gap connecting to the structure?
No, I think that's just, that's just another fence.
That's the same wooden fence.
Same wooden fence, just highlighting.
From the existing masonry to the building, yeah.
And that was there previously, so the addition is really the 400 linear feet that go all the way across.
What you got there, the arrows, where the arrows are pointing?
Yes, from kind of beginning to end, right, well.
Can you just clarify a little more on, I don't know how the masonry was unable to be done because of the trees?
Just with the footings and under the tree canopies and, you know, the root system? With the oak trees and what you can build on.
On the front as well?
On the front, yes.
Is the masonry, the part in pink, is that also six feet?
That, the existing masonry, yeah, I believe it is six feet, yes.
It's like four.
When you're in the, when you're actually at the site, it doesn't appear, because it's down in a bioswell, which is a little bit lower, down towards the bike trail, and then the backyard of the winery is set up a little bit higher, but I believe it is six feet.
Yeah, from the bike path.
From the bike path side. And then, the last topic was the, was really the bike crossing modification. This is really a simple modification, because we heard feedback from residents that were saying, hey, you really shouldn't change the materiality of the center of the crossing. So, we decided to remove the paver system in the center and then just have that all be consistent asphalt. So, if you're riding a bike, or if you're walking down the bike path, you're still on the same exact surface. There's no change, really. We did go, went ahead and maintained a band of pavers, however, on both sides of the bike path to, for an additional safety alert for people that are actually going to cross the bike path. And the next slide shows you the previous look, and then this is what we're, yes, what we're proposing to do, which essentially is, so, the center crossing here.
Okay, yeah.
Maintain this asphalt, and then there's two bands of pavers. That just kind of tells you, again, other than stop signs, to stop, pause, make sure that the coast is clear, and then you can proceed across.
And just for staff, that's going to be Ojai property, or is that going to be county? Have we decided that yet?
The bike path?
That portion of the bike path.
The bike path is currently County of Ventura.
Okay.
And I'm going to pass this over to the director.
I can speak a little bit to that, because I know there's a short-term and then a long-term plan, potentially.
Potentially.
As I understand, the short-term plan is working with the county and that there'd be some sort of a leased scenario of that actual piece of land, and then we would be taking care of it.
Okay, so you guys would be responsible for upkeeping the pavers and making sure?
Yes, absolutely, and we've been in conversation directly with Matt LeVere on the whole topic and met with multiple folks from the county at the job site as well.
Okay.
And the long-term plan?
Well, that'll turn over to Seabird.
So, short-term, in terms of construction and maintenance, likely will end up being Ojai Valley Inn and Spa. Here's the thing, it's, the agreement itself needs to go to city council, and it will need to go to the Board of Directors, so, or Board of Supervisors, sorry. And those agreements will have to be, and so, the agreements aren't necessarily going to be with Ojai Valley Inn and Spa directly. It's going to be with the two agencies, and then Ojai Valley Inn and Spa will be a part of that as well. So, it's really got to be between the agencies, first and foremost, and then bringing Chris into the equation. But he's been a part of the equation since the very beginning. He's the one that actually reached out to Matt LeVere and his team to start the conversation.
Okay.
It's my understanding that the only vehicles using that path will be golf carts or?
Correct, yes.
Or carts that are like golf carts.
Correct.
Is there going to be any signage for both the bicyclists and for the drivers of these vehicles to let them know they're about to approach an area? In the case of the vehicle drivers that is crossed by bicyclists who? In the case of the, the vehicle drivers that is crossed by, by bicyclists who don't have, as I understand it, an obligation to stop?
Correct.
And, and the driver of the vehicle must yield to the bicyclists?
That's right, absolutely.
I don't think as a city, we do a terribly good job, you know, sort of put a pin in it of doing signage for those issues. As somebody who drives across the bicycle path with some regularity in various places in town where, where it is crossed by a road, I'm always wondering who's, you know, are they gonna stop or am I gonna stop? Who's, who's in charge here? So you've got a little more control because these, these cart drivers are going to be your employees.
Correct.
But you also need to have signs that are appropriate for a cart in terms of height and size as opposed to an automobile vehicle which might be higher and out of, out of the vision of a, a cart driver.
Right. I mean, the goal is to, to make this crossing as safe, if not safer, than where the bike path crosses a city street. You know, with signage, both, we can add caution signs for people that are using the actual bike path, but any of the stop signs and anything on, will be both sides, which should be addressing shuttles only.
Right.
But absolutely, hundred percent.
And the only other question I've got is, does it make any sense to move those, those rumble strips, if you will, the, the strips of, of rock or?
The pavers.
Pavers back a little further? So you've got time to stop after you've, you've gotten to them.
What is the exact width of those?
Probably forty-eight inches now, but there's no, we can make them six feet.
Yeah, we can do.
Eight feet.
Whatever you think is appropriate.
Yeah.
You know, most, most of the golf carts are five to six feet long in length, so it, it might make sense to actually have that be a little bit deeper band.
Right.
Sure.
What's the extent of the bike path that you guys would be responsible for?
You know, we haven't worked those exact details out with the county yet, but just the primary crossing, obviously. But, and then see what, how they feel about, you know, how many feet going in each direction. Obviously, we're gonna want to make sure that it aesthetically looks good at all times for, you know, for guests in the community. So, you know, whatever we can work out with the county, we're willing to take that on. Because right now, our guests use that exact entrance now just to access the bike path with the rentals. So we do maintain that area already with our landscape crew. So it's not going to be a whole lot more than what we, we have been doing at our, voluntarily just to make sure that it's in good shape at all times.
One more quick question. I know that you don't have your landscaper here, but just a...
Yeah, Kathy's online.
Oh, great. Kathy, we, we received some public comment regarding fire-resistant landscaping. I don't know if that's something that you've looked into or considered?
Yeah, my comment is that, you know, with the new building code, there are fire requirements. And so what you're seeing here is a concept plan, not showing the plans exactly laid out. They're generally showed in groupings. But when it comes time to turn the plans in for the construction documents or what is known as the M Welo or M Wello plans, that will be definitely considered. And also that includes like where you place the plant material, the height of the plant material and the spacing, how far apart they are. So yes, that will be part of the final plans that get submitted.
Thank you. And then one more quick question. We've also had some comments around gray water capturing systems or, or, sorry, just water capturing systems, permeable landscaping. I'm sure you've considered those as well?
Sure. If you had a chance to look at the civil engineers' plans, were part of your package, and/or a couple of slides back that showed the landscape plan, you will see not only the berm areas that Chris was referring to earlier for, you know, potentially like sound deflection. But there are areas that are identified as biofiltration.
I see that. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. And so those are areas where we can catch stormwater runoff. So for instance, Ojai Avenue is higher than the bike trail. And I don't know if any of you have ever, you know, used the bike trail in the winter or walked that area. It actually is almost like a bog out there, just about every winter, at least, you know, when we do have rain. So there is a potential to catch a lot of water. And then, you know, what that'll end up doing is what's great for the soil, that'll help reduce your irrigation use as well. So that's not gray water, but it is stormwater capture.
Thank you, thank you. And then a question on the, the tree removal. You had mentioned this in the prior meeting. I just wanted to call it out again. You mentioned that the trees that are being considered are, do have some damage, is that correct?
Yeah, and I don't, as I mentioned last time, I'm not sure if you all had a chance to walk the site. But if you're actually on the main campus of the Ojai Valley Inn on Country Club Road and you go through the parking lot, which is demonstrated on our plans and, and to the bike trail, there's an existing chain link fence that divides the existing parking lot and the golf course greens. And those trees that are going to get removed are actually growing along a chain link fence there. And they're actually, the majority of them are like growing through the fence and leaning. So they weren't intentionally planted, you know, they probably were planted by a bird or an acorn rolled over and just found an ideal spot to germinate. But those are the trees that are slated to be removed. And then of course, as I mentioned last time, they will be mitigated. So they all have been given a dollar value. And that dollar value is, I'm not sure, I'm looking at my set here that I got from, on the agenda, but I think you may have it. It would be on the first sheet, the title sheet of the landscape portion. Here it is. Sheet L dash zero. And there's a tree permit table and then a replacement value table as well.
Oh, yeah, I see it.
And I'm happy to go over that again if, if you need me to.
No, it's good. I appreciate that.
So even though those trees are not rated as what you, a high-valued tree just because of their compromised of how they're growing and where they're growing, but because they are a protected species, the mitigation is required.
Awesome, awesome.
Yeah.
And also wanted to call out too, there's, this was something that one of our commissioners brought up as well regarding a wildlife study. And I don't know if that's necessarily appropriate, but just wanted to get your quick take on that.
Whether one was conducted, you mean ahead of time?
Yeah, best, basically regarding the nesting bird issue.
Oh, if you had a chance to read the Arborist report, there are guidelines or should I say standards as to when any tree removal and/or tree pruning can happen and it's based on the nesting season.
Okay.
And yeah, basically it's illegal to do that work outside and it's included in the, the tree report, which is of course part of the tree permit or will be associated document.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Kathy, could I just clarify the, it's not necessarily illegal, but what it is, is it's a study to determine whether or not there are any nesting birds. So if there aren't, then you have the green light to move forward. If there are, then you do not have the green light to move forward. You've got to wait until that season and that, and that nesting bird has, has passed. Exactly.
Please, Lucas, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, when you said illegal, I was like, hold on!
I mean, like if you weren't...
I appreciate it.
If there were nesting birds and you did the work then, that would be...
Yep, exactly.
A problem. But yeah, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate it. Anybody else have questions for Kathy?
I don't know if this, I mean, I don't know exactly who, whose decision it was. I was just curious why the new hedge coupled with the fence is on the backside maybe as opposed to the street side or like, you know, what's the, because you said you moved the fence back and then put the hedge behind it. I kind of thought you were gonna say you moved it back to put the hedge in front of it.
Yeah, so I'm not sure if you remember, but on the, the December meeting or the submittal, the fence was actually located closer to the parking lot or closer to like where the headlights would be. And then when the commission, you know, requested that there was, you know, something higher and just, you know, to ensure that there was adequate screening from the vehicles to Ojai Avenue, we moved the fence adjacent to the proposed decomposed granite sidewalk. And we also felt it was easier to probably maintain a hedge on the inside rather than the, on the outside where potentially there are going to be pedestrians using that public, I mean, the inn's gonna be installing it, but, you know, the public will have access to use that decomposed granite sidewalk that's parallel to Ojai Avenue. Does that make sense?
Yeah, sorry. I think I thought Chris said moving the fence south. So moving it north.
And in addition, we, we reviewed this all with our, the Arborist because the fence, since we moved it, is now located in the tree protection zone. But once again, if you go back into the Arborist report, it specified what can be done or not done within the tree protection zone and what monitoring needs to happen. So it was approved by the Arborist and would still fall under those stipulations.
I've got a question for Chris and, and if we can get, put up on the, on the projector sheet, nine of nine of the ECG documents. I, it's a question and I don't know if we can get that, get that up there. It's the...
Wait, are you talking about a specific sheet, like an architectural sheet?
Yeah.
Aside from the PowerPoint presentations, there, we don't have access to the sheets.
Oh, you don't have access to the whole deck?
Not to, not to put up on the...
What I'm trying to do is figure out, because I had somebody from the public call me and they said, well gee, they're gonna develop that whole lawn, which is currently used by the inn for parking, for this, for this winery. And they had thought there was gonna be a monster building and that, that the boundary between the winery and the lawn which is used for, for parking was going to be moved substantially to the east. It, and I guess I, I don't, in looking at the documents here, I don't see how much of the, that lawn which you use for parking is going to be within the, the, the new plans are, is going to be undeveloped lawn and will be used for parking overflow or future development or something.
Right, exactly. Yeah, that was ironically, just talking to Andy about that a moment ago. So there's still a great deal of that, that field that is, that is still there. And actually, we don't really, we don't park vehicles now where the winery, the winery expansion is going. We only park the vehicles down more on the Country Club intersection.
Right.
Or over there. I think the only time that we expand further into the field is during the Fourth of July, you know, and you have all the different...
I guess the issue is not whether it's parked or not, but there is a sense that there is a field there to the, to the east of the winery.
Yes.
Now. And there is a line here on the documents that I'm looking at that says project limits, which is, which appears to have been moved significantly to the east.
Yes.
But I don't know that there is any change in the vegetation between the two sides of that project limit.
Well, the change in vegetation is, I mean, you can see the, the berms, right? And there's a lot of planting on the berm. It's, it's actually pretty dense. Kathy and I were just talking about that. And then it goes down into this fence and then the rest will just continue to be as it is now.
Right.
There's, there's still a great deal of the field there. And one of the reasons that we expanded that direction was so we could make the connection from the resort to the actual property itself by adding that shuttle in. And then we kind of just, we wanted to maintain a lot of the vines, but add vines so you still had that real winery feel. But yeah, there's, there's plenty of parking space that is still there for the community as they need it for special events.
Okay. Awesome. Any other questions for the applicant?
Not at this time.
No?
I have a parking question.
Yeah?
Because at the last meeting, Commissioner Murphy and I sort of felt, agreed that, you know, with the sentiment, brought up the question of whether you guys have explored parking anywhere else on the site? And you said no, and I thought it was kind of nicely put, you know, maybe you should think about that. Did you guys look at another, I mean, you pushed it south and you added some height to the fence, but did you explore even in any sort of sketch or conceptual form, another parking scenario?
Well, we discussed it, but if you, if you look at the, the way the layout is, so the only other place that we could move it if it wasn't on Ojai Avenue would be here on the east end. And then you're separating the parking lot quite far from the other parking of the winery. This way it at least stays together more. And then how do you create access from parking that's way up on this side now to get to the winery? We're adding new pedestrian pathways. Another reason was if you did enter and then you were driving south to get to a parking, you also have more masking issues from westbound travelers going down Ojai Avenue. So does that mean we're adding another berm or more hedging and a substantial amount? So we definitely discussed it. But ultimately, we felt like this made the most sense for it, access for actual visitors to get to the winery by keeping it near the other parking lot.
Okay. Okay. Chris, I apologize, I did have one, oh, actually, maybe this is for staff, never mind. It's okay.
Okay. Well, I'll be right there. Right there. Thank you all. Appreciate your considerations.
Thank you so much.
If I could just hear on to what Chris was saying, and I think it's to the point of what Judy had brought up, the country, and I think to, to the point, I think both of you had brought up the access along country and whether or not that could be used. If we're, if, if the, if one of the kind of unwritten goals is to maintain as much of that as open, unused vegetation, you start introducing parking on that eastern edge and you're still applying some of these pieces that we're talking about here, you're looking at more than, significantly more than half, if not a majority of that area being, being used for that, that parking scenario. Because you, not only do you have the parking, but you also have the access to it as well. Here, they're using an existing curb cut that already exists and then, and then basically ends at the very eastern edge of that property. And then the extension of the parking to that, to that eastern edge. The other thought was, and I, I think Chris and I have talked about this early on, I think Mara was involved in the conversation, on the south side. And whether or not there is an opportunity for, for parking along the south side. Chris kind of touched on this as well. There's a lot of, of moving parts to that as well. And likely the parking there, while it would be hidden from Ojai Avenue, it's also hidden from, from a security standpoint. Ojai, I mean, the, the trail itself is dark at night. You're gonna light some of that parking, but to be fair, when we're looking at lighting, we're using dark sky standards, so we want it to be dimly lit. That's the same thing that's gonna be happening along Ojai Avenue. But you already have, you already have some lighting that's taking place along Ojai Avenue, so you've got some sort of safety. So I think the safety piece was something that, that Chris and his team were looking at as well. You, you put it to the south closest to the trail. I think there's some, some concerns inherent from what Chris was, was talking about from a safety standpoint, so.
Okay, that's fair.
Alright.
Well, we'll, we'll open it up for public comment and then we'll ask questions for staff. Is that okay? Alright. So we'll open it up for public comment. I've got two speaker cards here. One, Mr. Bill Miley. I think I did print out Mr. Miley's comments. Pretty cool. No, that's wrong. Oh, you did.
Hello. These are my comments for your commission to consider, to consider. There appears to be no permeable pavement. There should be. They seem, they plan to use the same ingress and egress cutouts for vehicles off of Ojai Avenue. I question that. The fence along Ojai Avenue blocking the view of the parking lot is, as I see it, solid and appears ordinary. It also appears that would be a great surface for graffiti. The above fence, the one I just talked about, needs plants to obscure it. I didn't see any. It would soften it, it would prevent it from being abused by graffiti. The Topa Mountain Winery has lots of plants in front of the walls, which is really good. How will electric bike speeds be managed at the path intersection? They go 20 miles an hour sometimes. The pavement, I believe, where the crossing is, needs to be different so that people will visually be able to see there's a crossing, not just asphalt through. It needs to show a physical change. And what about at night, maybe lighted? Visitors and guests of the winery will be greater in number than those of the Topa Mountain Winery. Why? Because it's part of the Ojai Valley Inn. How much more, I guess, it's a guest calculation. How will parking needs grow beyond 61 if necessary? I think that the proposed egress, using the egress that's there now, is risky. I would suggest that a no left turn marker be approved by Caltrans. I believe, the way I remember it anyway, that the traffic study chart shows 50/50 coming from the east and the west, but the project distortion trip chart says 60% from the east, 25% from the south, and 15% from the north. That's confusing. It would seem to me that there will be an increase in traffic from new, from new guests at the inn because of the added winery, the winery. The traffic plug chart seems to be confusing to me. Overall, it shows huge numbers of vehicles every day going somewhere. I don't understand, it needs to be explained. And what about the 16,000 vehicles? Where is that happening? At last, some of us believe that we need more parking in downtown because people drive around when it's busy looking for parking spaces. Some of us would like to request the inn considering helping the city locate and purchase and develop a par, a parking lot that would be a great public benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Okay. Another public comment, Mr. Steingold?
Thank you. Larry Steingold. I think this is, it's a pretty good project. I'm concerned about the egress and egress for the traffic because what if? What if there are a lot of calls, accidents, what have you? What is the plan B? Is it make a right and come in through the Ojai Valley Inn main driveway and they get shuttled to wherever? Because now they've been cut out of the valet parking. But the parking should go on the south side because they've got the same security on the other side, which is the north, which is the south side of the south. They've got parking over there too. So moving the parking to the south rather than in the north would be okay because they, the security's going to be the same. And on materials being made, if this was post Pacific Palisades and stood up like that house that they've been talking about, that wasn't touched because it was made of concrete that looked like wood or whatever, would this, could they do that here and make this building essentially fireproof or fire resistant at the same cost or maybe a little more and make it look the same way? As an example of what can be done here in Ojai on commercial properties? I mean, cement roof tiles, cement fencing, things that are maybe a little more, a little less, but it'll save money on insurance? I assume, because I'm, unless they're self insured. Okay. But I think they're, I mean, they can do some things, but I think it's a nice project. I just think it needs to be tweaked on the traffic and on the traffic on the bike path. Because if there are people who are walking back and forth, and I believe according to the plan, they get like 77% capture of all their clients eat and drink and stay on property, they're going to be walking back and forth. And somebody at 20, 25 miles an hour on the bike path is going to may take somebody out. So this has to be seriously considered, so thank you.
Thank you, Larry. All right, we've got one more. Richard?
Hello again. Generally against the plan as it's presented tonight, I feel that there is too much here that continues the trend of the Ojai Valley Inn pushing the city to give them more than what they deserve. By the way, for context, this is only my second time speaking before this body and the first time was less than two hours ago, so.
You're doing great.
Thanks. And this is also a way for me to introduce my advocacy the last 15 years with the Ojai Ohana to you. So I feel that there have been some less than honest statements on the part of OVI during this process, including earlier before tonight. So they did have some things that they did pushing the city at different levels, business leaders as well, so that they could have their New Year's, the New Year's dinner this past, the party, this past New Year's, which including taxes was almost exactly $500 per person. I did attend events at Ojai, I mean, at Topa Mountain Winery, primarily including music and special events and holiday gatherings, and I really liked it that way when it was that way. So I know there are questions about the original transfer from OVI to the winery and the reversal of it several years later. I feel many in the community have attempted to get the answers to their questions, but they were unsuccessful. And I want to make an important point that actually sickens many of us, and I received many messages today about this. In my group, we have followed the Ojai Valley Inn and we discovered this week that their least expensive discounted nightly rate listed on the website, including taxes and fees, is over $1,000. If you want golf, that's an extra $1,000 per night. OVI is actively pursuing those extremely wealthy who lost their homes in the upscale neighborhoods to come to Ojai and I quote, "Find your moment." This is in their advertising right now. And you know that we've had issues for many years about the way that this has progressed. We know that they provide a large percentage of the TOT taxes, so I understand a part of that.
Thank you, Richard.
So please let me finish. This rate, by the way, and being called a discounted advanced purchase rate is significantly higher than the rates for the same room in the peak summer season last year. They do claim they have evacuate rates, but they're not on the website, as are so many other.
Thank you, Richard.
Hotels who place those on their front page and reaching out to the hurting rather than appearing to be greedy and unfeeling.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Richard?
Richard.
I have to ask you something.
I haven't gone as long as the previous, may I finish, please?
You have gone beyond and we're talking specifically about this plan.
Okay, may I make one comment about that, please?
No, you've already had your three minutes. Richard, please.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm grateful for the time, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving on, let's move into questions for staff. Oh, I'm sorry.
We have one online.
Yeah. Do we have anybody online?
Yes, Diane.
Go ahead, Diane. You're, you're on, Diane. Diane, we can't hear you. We can try coming back to Diane, maybe? Okay.
She's muted.
Yeah, are you on mute, Diane? All right, well, we'll try coming back to Diane, I think we're.
Hello?
Oh, there you go.
Hello?
Okay, we can hear you now.
Okay, sorry. I'm totally blind and so I had a problem finding the unmute button, I apologize. I have, I have questions and I know I'm supposed to have comments, but being I'm totally blind and being your demonstr, your, your presentation was very visual, I have questions, hopefully somebody can answer for me. And I do apologize for asking for that accommodation. There are apparently going to be some rumble strips and I'm curious, are they going across the bike trail or parallel with the bike trail?
Chris, do you mind addressing that? Basically, it's regarding the strips or from the, from the crossing. I believe Diane lives in the neighborhood.
Hi, Diane. Yes, they would run parallel with the bike path on both sides, not on the path itself, though.
Okay, super. And so the purpose of those is the carts will know to stop before they enter the bike trail, so those of us that are blind like me, and I'm not the only person, there's a blind woman that rides her bicycle and has a, a safety vest and says blind on it, and I think she's very brave, and my son has a different opinion on it, but that's okay. So that they will, they will know to look for pedestrians, that's super. I have one more question. My guide dog will not be able to discern where this rock, crosswalk is and my new one won't either when I get her, I assume for her. How are you guys putting up signs? Somebody was talking about putting up signs for people on the bike trail too. Is that something that you guys are doing? I'm confused and as a blind person, I don't know how that would help us.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, we also can still work with the city and the county on exactly what safety signage everybody would collaboratively like to see, but we were thinking to do caution cart path signs that are X number of feet prior to the actual crossing, of course, stop signs, but open to any suggestions that you or anyone else has to try to make it as safe as possible and also accessible for anyone as well.
Right, right. Okay, I appreciate that. And I, my third thing, which I guess is more of a comment than anything else, is being I live in the neighborhood and I walk up and down the bike trail a minimum of twice a day to go to Vons and various different things on that end of Ojai. Are you going to be actually doing construction across the bike trail at some point? Or are you totally leaving that alone and only doing it on the periphery of the bike trail?
I think primarily it's the periphery of the bike trail.
Okay.
And just the, the connection. Both sides.
You're, you're okay, you can finish.
On both sides. You know, the, the road to connect, so, you know, so it's a four ways, you know, to the actual path, but no, we don't plan to change the asphalt.
You're not going to.
No, not across it.
Okay, super. I appreciate that, that those are all my questions and I have no comments. It sounds okay from my perspective. I'm a little concerned about my friend who is blind, but that's okay, that's her problem. I'll have to, I'll have to have her talk to you guys.
Okay. Thank you, Diane.
Certainly open to hearing any other ways that we can improve.
Sure, I appreciate it. Thanks, Chris, bye.
Thank you, Diane. Any other comments online?
No.
All right. We'll open it up for questions for staff. Any questions? Let's go first. Nobody? I don't know, did we get all our questions out?
Well, we've been asking right along.
We had our last question session, so it's okay if you want to get into the discussion.
Okay. Well, I had a couple of questions for staff, if that's okay. So one of the questions I had, I know this was called out in the last meeting, this is more of a point of clarification. There was a comment regarding the decibel noise for, for sound around 55, mentioning that the applicant was proposing 55, but that's not necessarily the case, correct?
That is correct. That was a misspoken someplace and not corrected in, I'm sorry. And so it, it went uncorrected in the meeting and so that's why it was addressed in the staff report.
It was addressed, okay. And also that when we do those sound analysis, they're done from the street, correct?
In your staff report, it is indicated that the, the code says either or, there's two different locations, and one is from the source and one is at the property line. And you know what? I have the attorney looking it up right now.
Oh, thank you.
Actually, it's in the resolution. I'm going to read the condition of, that's in the resolution, hold on one moment.
Let's put your mic up.
Okay. Pursuant to section 5-11.08, sound level measurement of the Ojai Municipal Code, indoor measurements, outdoor measurements shall be taken with the microphone located along the property line of the complainant's property or the noise source.
Okay, got it. Or the noise source, okay, got it, perfect. And then another point of clarification, our noise ordinance, it applies the same to both residential and commercial? Is that correct? Or do we have different requirements for both residential and commercial?
We have different requirements for residential and commercial. So the commercial is 55 at, after 10:00 PM, I believe, and 65 from 7:00 AM until 10:00 PM. Where residential, 45 and 55.
45 after 10:00 PM.
After 10:00 PM and then, yeah.
55 during the day, okay, okay, gotcha, perfect. All right. And that is, so that's all commercial zones, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just making sure. Okay, cool.
And just, just to be clear, the commercial standard should be imposed on this property because it's a commercial property. If the planning commission has concerns, because this is the second project that this has had come up, this is something that you could address in a joint meeting with the city council or make a formal recommendation that they should revisit the noise ordinance and address it specific to, it seems with hotels or spaces that are holding events within the city.
Right.
In close proximity to residential properties.
Got it, okay. And, and then regarding the, the CUP, just again, point of clarification, the original CUP was approved for events, correct? As events?
Yes, and there were specific days that are included in your packet.
Right. And, and the winery was an event designed as an event location? The original?
It was, it, it, yes, it was a winery and it could accommodate events.
Okay, perfect. All right. Again, just point of clarity. All right, cool, okay. Let's see. Anybody else have questions for staff? I had another quick question. As far as the, the conditions go, we have conditions already outlined. Well, let's see, as part of the staff, or sorry, it's the approval. I believe they are in the very back. I believe they are in the very back, yeah, page attachment A, page 16 to 17.
So something that I didn't note in my presentation is that the conditions of approval are the same as what you saw on December 4th, except for three additional conditions that are on page 16 of 17
Correct.
of the packet.
Correct. So, okay, so one of the conditions is applicant show point speakers outdoor events, including a tour toward the west of Ojai. Okay. We didn't call out any sort of... Oh, I see the tree protection. Okay, cool. And then we've got the general noise regulations. All right. With the traffic, I know that we didn't call out the number of... I think as we're looking at the CUP, it's expanding the usage, and there's going to be additional outdoor seating. But I don't see anywhere on that number. Do we have a number of how many outdoor seating we're actually gonna?
Yeah, it was 98.
Okay.
It was less than 100. It was in the 90s.
I didn't see that in the amendment, though. I'm sorry, not in the amendment, in the resolution. Do we need to include that in the resolution? Because we're expanding the CUP. I guess my question is, if we're expanding the CUP, what are we expanding it to? What's the limit, the top number?
So you're talking about putting a limitation on the number of seats outdoors?
Yeah, for example, like if we're amending it to expand the outdoor usage, which I believe we are, what's the limit on that? Is it just infinity? There is no limit? They can have as many outdoor seating things that they want?
So there's a couple of things, and I think it gets to some of the discussions that we've had in the past regarding outdoor seating, just in general. One is outdoor seating doesn't have a parking requirement or standard, right? So that already shows that the community is very much in favor of outdoor seating versus the indoor. But one thing, you could then argue, well, seats are, butts are in seats regardless. So if you're adding additional seating, and this is really to the new commissioner that hasn't been a part of that conversation regarding previous projects that have come up, we've talked about this ad nauseam. But with that being said, the number of seats don't necessarily dictate a number of parking associated with it. However, if there's a comfort level in terms of identifying a limit or a ceiling on the number of seats through this body as a part of the process, it still fits within, like I talked about in the very beginning, still fits within the findings that this body is looking at as a part of a decision.
Yeah, I would like to see some sort of number associated with that, you know, versus just, you know, wide open, unlimited. I think that would be appropriate.
So to the point of...
Are we discussing this now, or are we?
Yeah, it's a question now. It's not deliberation.
Are we?
I apologize. You're right. This is more of a discussion.
I might take issue with you.
That's okay.
If you're really interrogating.
It's just an idea.
So it's a question. We'll pause there.
And we'll discuss.
Wait for deliberation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so any other questions for staff before we get into discussion? Because I think we already got into discussion. No? Okay, let's get into discussion. All right.
Hold on, before we go into discussion.
Yeah.
It's closed public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Closing the public hearing. No other questions or comments? No, nobody online? Okay, so we'll close the public forum. Thank you. All right, discussion. Who wants to go first? These are quiet.
I'll go first. I've been quiet because I... The Ojai Valley Inn. I realize that we have a member of the public who spoke about the fact that there is some form of conspiracy between the city staff and the Ojai Valley Inn, which I have not observed in the years that I've now been on this board and that I've been in the community. But... And I'm disturbed also by this. Yeah, look, I'd like the Ojai Valley Inn to be cheaper than it is. I'm having a child get married this coming year, and there are very few of his relatives who will be able to stay at the Ojai Valley Inn. There are a few, but for the most part, they can't. And that's sort of reality, you know? It's like you can have a Ford dealership or you can have a Mercedes dealership. And if you've got a car dealership and you could complain that the people in Ojai can't afford Mercedes, we better have... But I think it's a very slippery slope when we get into throwing stones at things which are high-priced, and particularly when they are providing the tax bases for the life we all live.
And it's also not really relevant to this project.
Right. Yes, that as well.
So we gotta keep that in context.
The Ojai Valley Inn is operated as a permitted event space. They know how to do it. They put on weddings, as somebody mentioned at the last meeting. Amazon has had three meetings here in the last year, 18 months, or whatever it is. They know how to go from an intimate scale to a huge scale. They know how to handle parking.
Historically.
Like no one knows how to handle parking. They've got this fleet of golf carts or vehicles to move people around. They handle parking in, you know, cars disappear. I don't know where they go. And so they are both permitted as an event space and are skilled operators in event space.
Well, they have this, this location was permitted originally as an event space.
Right. And the operator has significant parking on its site. So if there is a large event, there is both paved and unpaved parking on their campus to take care of it. The winery is not surrounded by residents. There are some residents, you know, several hundred yards away, but it is, they are at an angle to the property. They're not lined up facing it. I think the design doesn't bother me, and frankly, the design we reviewed on the 4th of December didn't bother me. But I think the architect has done a clever way of taking the roofs and adding dimension to it, which will bring the sense of large warehouse feeling that some felt. So I think they've done a skillful job of listening to the public and responding. I'm not worried about graffiti because the bunch that run the inn are not going to let graffiti last for more than five minutes before they remove it. They keep an exquisite plant there. It's in great shape. I've never seen any graffiti on their property. So I'm not worried about that, but I think the layers of fencing and vegetation that they're putting up are going to more than deal with the issue that we were concerned about, which is that vehicles parked along Ojai Avenue, their headlights are going to flash into the eyes of the people coming from east to west. You know, I... I... There are a lot of events at the Topet Mountain Winery when it was owned by Larry rather than by the inn. And we all, you know, not, well, we all, but many of us went to those events. I'm glad to see the facility open again and available for events. And, you know, there's only so much management we can do. And I actually think that they're in the business of this, the facility has been built, purpose-built for events. And I think the idea of putting in rules and regulations about time and place and volumes of people and things like that that we have for the motels, which I had not really thought it through, but when you have an event at a motel, you take out the parking lot and use that as your space. And we did have an example or several examples of motels not doing the elegant job that the inn does. The inn does hundreds of events a year, hundreds of events. We never get complaints about the inn. And either noise or time or, you know, it's... So, I mean... You know, I just, I look at it and think, this is an elegant reuse plan that architecturally, they're striving to do something that's interesting and different. This is one of the few places close to the town where there is sort of a melange of architectural style. So it doesn't bother me at all that it's not slavishly a Spanish mission revival. And, you know, I say, you know, my opinion is they should go with Godspeed, and we should, as a board, encourage people who have development plans that are as thoroughly vetted as this one is from, you know, everything from the tree studies to the traffic studies, to the landscape design, to the architectural design. And anyway, I just, I'm very enthusiastic about this project.
Awesome. Thank you. Judy, looks like you have some comments, too?
Well, I do.
All right.
The, I would like to say first that I appreciate the modifications that the inn has incorporated into their plans as a result of the comments of the public and the commission from December 4th. I have listened to many people in the community who like the Mission Revival and want to see the current building style kept as is. But I agree with Jamie. I think that this is an eclectic part of town and that we don't have to maintain the Mission Revival that's required downtown. I would like to see the plantings, the landscaping, take into account very seriously fire-prone plants and to exclude them. A report that I received today and looked at regarding fire-prone plants led me to find out that I have some bushes in my front yard that have to go. So, anyway, thank you, Renee. I assume that that's something that Kathy Nolan will be very cognizant of, and I hope that Chris holds her feet to the fire on that. I am a little distressed to think that our city has rules that say outdoor seating is not to be used to calculate parking. That's silly. I mean, those bods are going to come and sit in those chairs, and you know they're going to drive. So that's probably not in our bailiwick here tonight, but I wanted to tell you that that's my opinion. And I'm confused, sorry, but are the hedges on the north, the new hedges next to the fence, are they going to be north or south of the fence?
They are currently south of the fence, although they can be north of the fence, too. But we really don't, we were just texting about that, like, right now it is fence, then hedge, then shrubs, then parking. But it certainly could be reversed, or, you know, we, I don't think we, as long as we're achieving the masking goal.
Right. I kind of like the idea of the hedges on the north side so that people who are driving are looking at hedges instead of a fence, and that would take care of the issue of graffiti or people messing with the fence.
Perfectly fine with us.
Something else on my mind, but just flew out of my mind, so I'll come back. If I think of it, I'll come back. I'll reclaim time.
You're good. Jonathan, did you have any discussion items?
Yeah, I guess, you know... Well, with you guys, I guess, I wanted to talk, you know, I think that I generally agree with Jamie's sentiment. I mean, I think that it's going to be great. I'm quite sure of it. But I think there are a few things that just, like, I'm having trouble getting over on principle, and one is the parking. I mean, I've asked some questions about it. You know, I... For me, there's just, well, there's a couple of elements. There's the, I guess, there's the concerns brought up by, well, Larry and many people of, you know, the egress and ingress, which I have an electric car. I have charged it at Boku before, and it's not a very highly-used zone, right? There's like maybe five cars there once, you know, in a while, and it's still very hard to get in and out, you know? And I think just the general element of having the parking on the street is a little hard for me to feel great about, because I do feel like it's like an extension of this parking lot as you enter Ojai Avenue. And I understand that there's good measures going into making it more... Kind of making it where you don't really know that to a degree. So, you know, I guess I'm struggling a little bit with that, if that is adequate, because it's still, on the one hand, there's maybe an aesthetic concern, on the other, there's maybe a functional concern. You know, I think regarding, I guess, I asked the question, kind of Chris's response, and for sure, this is probably further than they would want to think, but, you know, for me, if the parking was going to get shifted, I would just think it would just, there would sort of be a mirroring of program in a way, potentially.
Like, what do you mean by that?
Where the parking, it's not, like, I don't think, I get it, it shouldn't be in this more eastern zone. That doesn't make sense.
It makes sense over there, right.
But there's a whole design here that's, you know, that's...
It's on the north.
It's on the north.
Right. Where would you like to see it in a perfect world?
Well, I'd be, I would, I would just, I guess I want to really know that it can't be on the south here. You couldn't just, let's say, I mean, you can't just mirror a plan, but you could just mirror it, and you say, okay, it's here. It's in this back area, right? Close, just as close, equally close to the facility.
The drive to it will become longer.
The drive to it would become longer.
From the street, from the country club road.
That's right.
You'd have a long drive.
But with...
Get it anywhere near.
But with it, you could even have two points of, I mean, look, I'm not going to design it for them, but I'm just, like, so that's just a question, like, and it's, once again, I don't know if it's better, but I feel like you kind of asked the question in the last meeting, and I had hoped that there would be, hey, here's a sketch of us exploring that because we hear what you're saying. And, look, we tried it, you know, and it doesn't really work, or we're willing to look at it. I mean, I think in the end, I'm sort of also on the fence about the bike crossing. I think, I'm sure they're going to do a great job of it on principle. I'm curious about it as like the start of an approval of crossing the bike path in more formal ways on a more regular basis.
Yeah. I mean, I think that one thing that's, it is difficult to create that because you've got to look at the county.
Right, so then there's, right. So then there's, then there's kind of, then there becomes like a bit of a priority, the fact that the inn has the abilities and, you know, the expertise and all this to be able to talk to the county or work well with the city, and that that gives them an advantage, which is, I mean, once again, just kind of thinking observations, not like...
Right. Good thoughts, though.
It might be fine, you know?
Yeah.
So those are kind of the two things that I'm having trouble reconciling.
Right.
The building, I'm sure, is going to be lovely. I mean, I do kind of wish the, I guess, to your, to, Chris sort of explained it, but I do sort of wish that the walls, I guess, like aesthetically, I kind of wish that there was some sort of... Like, the rationale is a little hard. It's like, obviously, it'd be nicer if there was this masonry sort of surrounding or this plaster kind of thing around it, and then we had this new wooden clad thing on the inside that that was sort of like a logic was kind of there. I think that also might, it would probably, I mean, I could be wrong, but it might help some people that have concerns between the Mission style and this style. It's a little bit of...
They're keeping that original rock or the original wall.
It's like a little section. I mean, I get it. It's like, fine, but I'm just saying, like, I think if there was a way for it to be more of a contiguous plaster wall that then has this thing on the inside, people might forget about... People might forget about this question a bit more and might feel like, oh, this is making sense.
I think they were doing that to save some of the trees.
Trees were a problem with the footings.
Yeah, it looks like at the front, I mean, I guess, once again, it's like, it's not, it's a hard to, it's not like carefully studied. Yeah, yeah, no, I saw it back there, so, but this is a new fence that they just proposed. So, I guess it kind of changes today. On the front, it seems like it would be possible, but I don't know. I mean, you know, that's a question I have. So, I think that's kind of-
Well, did you want to ask the, want to ask Chris about some of these? I mean, these are all good questions.
Yeah, I think these are, I guess my questions, my thoughts about the, the considerations of these things.
Chris, would you be okay addressing some of these?
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I think there's a couple. I think one is the, did you guys, have you, have you considered doing the parking on the, this would be on the west side and expanding it to the south? So basically when they drive in, they go down the original parking and they kind of move back? Is that what you're thinking?
No.
Well, no, but although, but it's interesting you say that. So I think that if you move it to the south, you could have both. You could egress and, and ingress from Country Club, Club Road, but you could also use the existing if it was right here.
I just can't picture it.
Here, where's the?
I, I guess, Chris, question, have you guys-
Anyways, have you considered?
We, we looked at, I mean, actually, one of the reasons we didn't think that that, that putting the parking lot there would, was because of, you would have to enter on Country Club then. And you'd be driving parallel to the bike path to, to access it. And the thought was that that would be actually more unsafe to have traffic then coming parallel to your, to the bike path and then also the congestion over on Country Club. I mean, that was kind of our initial thoughts on why that was ruled out.
Concerned about that initially too.
There's a light there.
There is a light.
Which means that there's actually a traffic control system already in place. But I mean, there's nothing controlling this.
So you're saying over on this side?
I'm saying if it was just here.
Over here?
And then you could just, you could drive in from there if you needed to. Or, yeah, as you said, you could do that too, if you needed to egress as if that's an issue.
Right.
Anyways, just, yeah, that's the question, was it? Was it, you know, was it sketched early on? Was it considered in the sort of like design?
I think just for the purposes of the, the safety and then the separation of the two parking lots. And then also, just, you know, we're moving cars now closer to the neighbors when we're trying to mitigate noise. So there's also the noise impact to those residents right on Country Club.
Like over here, I guess.
And there's already a cut-in, an egress, egress. So, you know, utilizing that made the most sense to us.
Yeah, okay, okay.
But I hear what you're saying, that's, you know, they're, they're valid ideas.
Yeah.
And then I think the second one was the rock wall and this was toward the front?
Yeah, so there's definitely no way for that to be the plaster wall.
Yeah, you know, I would like to defer to Kathy if she's still on because-
Because it looks like it's, I mean, it's hard, you know, it's a drawing, so it's a little hard to know. It feels like it's just south of the tree canopies mostly and, but I, it could be.
Exactly, but I think it's still under the drip line. Some of those trees are really quite large, but, so that's why we're thinking to cut posts in and that's where the fence would work.
Yeah.
But Kathy, are you still with us?
Yes, I am. So I think the question is, okay, we know that part of the existing exterior masonry wall is going to remain. And then the proposed fencing in front of the parking lot, why didn't we add a wall there? We did actually, when we talked to staff at the beginning of our design process, looked at that. But the largest concern that we had, and we did address it with the arborist, is that we would be installing a wall under the canopy of the oaks. So for instance, when you're putting a fence in and it's specified in the arborist report, the posts are typically six to eight feet apart. So you're just digging a hole and it could be hand-done.
Sure.
If you're putting a wall and you're putting a continuous footing in, and so now the potential for damaging roots on the protected oaks is greater. And that's why, you know, according to the arborist and our design team, we knew you wanted the screening, cars from Ojai Avenue, but the fence would probably be the best choice.
Got it, okay.
All right. Did you have a, was there one more? I think that was two main ones, right?
It was, and this isn't really, it was just kind of about the bike path, about our feeling on setting that precedent.
Yes, yes, yes.
Regarding that bike path issue, I have not used the bike trail, I must admit. So I don't know what's already there in terms of warnings to people on the bike path when they get to a street crossing. Can you enlighten me on that? And, and, I mean, Diane already uses the bike path. How does her dog know that a street is coming up? Is there any thing there that would warn them?
There's stop signs, but there's-
There's signs.
There's signs, okay.
There's not rumble strips or anything like that to alert. And mind you, it, it's not something that the city has purview over within those areas.
Right, I realize that this is a county issue, but it's nice to get ahead of the problems that could happen.
And there is signage on there to identify hours. And then motors, the motorized vehicle piece as well, which is largely ignored, as well as like a map identifying the point-to-point for, for the entire trail. That's typically at, at most intersections.
The other point I'd like to make is that I would like to affirm Bill Miley's suggestion about making those, the egress on Ojai Avenue a right turn only. Now I realize that's Caltrans, that's way out of our purview again, but-
Well, two things regarding that. One is, you're right, it is a Caltrans right-of-way. But two, the traffic report that was put together by ATE didn't identify the need for that.
I, I, right, they didn't. Although I have to say that that traffic report was exceedingly difficult to follow and to understand. The bottom line was, this isn't going to impact traffic very much.
Right, the, and I would say those experts went, went into pretty great detail explaining.
They did go into detail.
Which is the reason why we didn't focus on it for this meeting because we felt like that was addressed.
It was addressed.
At the first meeting.
Okay, well, if it turns into an issue, that would be a solution.
Yep, absolutely.
Just saying.
One of the solutions, there's potentially several, right.
Okay. All right, well, I have a couple comments. I did provide some prior to the meeting, just regarding the design review, the conditional use permit and the tree permit. So I won't really read off each one, but basically when it comes down to the design review, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think that, you know, this, this part of Ojai doesn't have a stipulation regarding Mission Revival. I know that a lot of the community wants to see Mission Revival. And I think that's a great question for city council. I think we could bring that up and, and make it a, a code change where we do, you know, architectural design standards throughout the entire stretch of the Ojai, you know, downtown corridor. I mean, this is not necessarily downtown corridor, it's a little farther away, but something to consider, I think. Also, one of our commissioners outlined that if we do go down with this style, it will set a precedence, which I think the precedence is already set in that area. I think if you look at that area, it's very eclectic. Mora pointed out, there's a lot of this kind of barn style already all over Ojai. So we already have kind of this ranch, you know, architectural styles, you know, throughout the community. And I feel like this barn style, while it's, it is a little bit different than what we're used to, it's not something that's totally out of the ordinary. So I feel like in the consideration of context and continuity and scale, I think it fits. I do, I do appreciate the Ojai Valley Inn, looking at the scale, looking at the mass that we talked about initially and, and addressing some of the public concerns and changing the architecture. I think that's really going to help in that massing, changing and the visualization as people drive into Ojai. So it won't look like a giant just box sitting there, which is great. You know, we don't want, you know, box stores, the box store look. I think as far as the architectural design, I mean, I think, you know, obviously you guys have, have provided a history of providing outstanding work and showing, you know, what, what you guys can do as far as just, you know, high-quality design. So I'm not concerned about that. I think that with the conditional use permit, I did have some questions because I, I do know that we're expanding the usage of this property and I'd just like to see some of that called out. Some of my fellow commissioners don't necessarily want to see a number put on that, but I don't know if there's some way that we can amend that a little bit, put on some sort of cap or some sort of, you know, guide or, or something that we can look towards. Also, I, I didn't see that there was any call-out for the, the number of parking spaces. They are providing more parking spaces than what's, what's in the code, which I think is, is nice. I think that we should call that out somewhere as well. Again, just to justify, because what I'm trying to justify is, you know, what was called out in the resolution, that the proposed amendment to the use, the expanded use does not, is not more objectionable or detrimental to the general welfare in the specific case or the more objectional or determinant, determinate, I can't even say that word, to a particular area in the zoning district that the use is enumerated on. So anyway, it's just supporting that paragraph. Does that make sense?
Right, and I think generally speaking, when you're, when you're looking at that, you're actually looking at all the development standards in terms of furthering the points that you just mentioned. That's not just the parking standards, it's not just the height of the buildings, it's not just the setbacks. It's, or the parking, like you just mentioned. It's all of those.
Right.
Landscaping as well. I mean, we, through, through our landscape ordinance, through, through Wheelo, through MS4, there are a number of pieces that are, are going to be required of this applicant even moving forward through the, not just the design phase, which is what we're on right now, but the, the plan check phase, which is really when the details and the heavy lift goes into the, the number of sheets and the details of the project itself. This is really kind of at the 15,000-foot level, not necessarily 30,000-foot. When we get to the plan check phase, we're boots on the street at that point.
Right, yeah, yeah, okay.
If there is a consensus from the commission standpoint to put numbers on certain things, like for instance, the parking, while there are five spaces that are being taken away, I believe 35 are being added, so the net gain is still 30.
Right, right, okay.
I mean, that's something that's already covered in the plans themselves.
Yeah.
You can even go as far as to say the plans that are date-stamped for this meeting, that were presented at this meeting shall maintain consistency.
I don't know, what do you guys think? Should we call that out? Or what do you guys, what do you feel about that? Putting numbers around some of the parking and putting numbers around some of the seating and-
See, I think that since this is becoming part of the larger campus of the facility, which includes the golf facilities and spa facilities and, and the lawn which gets used for overflow parking and so on and so forth, I think you've got to look at the whole thing as a campus.
Right.
And, and they've got lots of options on that campus because they may have a tennis match which fills those parking spaces next to the tennis court during the daytime. But during the evening, they're not, they haven't got a tennis match going on. And so they're adding 35, or 30, I'm sorry, 30 parking spaces to the totality of what they have currently. Again, they, they are, I, I think, and part of this is, is hard to put into a CUP. There's just, it's a well-managed company, so they know what they're doing. And what you're saying is I want to put constraints on it, and my feeling is-
Guardrails.
Guardrail, well, right, but I think putting guardrails on places where we have these conflicts, where they're not event spaces, where there are motels with a parking lot. Parking lot is where they put the event on and, you know, it's all, whereas they're managing all day long those, those internal conflicts and trying to figure out where are we going to put those 50 cars that are going to show up for this event? I guess I, I, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't bother me.
But do you think that the spots in the front here, or like, do you think those are? I mean, those feel to me like those are more like the public spots in a way. Like, I think what you're, like, the event stuff, I mean, that is mostly going to be a more managed thing with the day-to-day of where the days-
Somebody who comes in, wants to taste some wine, buy a couple bottles of wine or maybe have lunch there and they've driven off, they've come in to town and they want to go in. I, I actually think that parking there is just fine. And having people essentially drive deeper into the lot to the south and then, and then park back there, doesn't feel welcoming to me. And welcoming to local people and to, in other words, it's, it's off the road. It's not on Ojai Avenue. It runs parallel to Ojai Avenue, shielded from Ojai Avenue, so it's not going to be an eyesore. I don't know how much better the experience would be either for the person going there or for, for a big event or one who just drove in to, you know, buy a bottle of wine. I'm not sure that, I, I think the front parking lot is actually quite good. And I'm really glad to see that they put a turnaround at the end of it so that people can drive down there and come back. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy with it. I'm not, I'm not, I don't think that there's much improvement trying to move that around.
Okay. But that's- Any thoughts?
Oh, I could be convinced either way about putting a limit of, of seating numbers.
We could certainly evaluate with city council and revise the code for other seats.
Yeah, I, I'm, I could go either way on that. I, I can't really envision the inn-
Just not make it part of this condition.
Making it crowded, because that's not in their best interest.
I also, without a standard to point to in the code, it, it feels like something as a long-term project would be a better idea than this project to make a recommendation to council.
Versus a one-off?
Yeah, so that we're not, for the next place, we're not using a different standard for different reasons, that we have something consistent that we can apply to everybody fairly.
I think the same thing would apply with the noise. I think reevaluating the noise ordinance.
Yeah, so maybe a, we could, we could have like a study session with you at a later date where visiting these, these themes that are coming up fairly consistently in projects of things where we can fine-tune the code.
Okay, cool. All right, anything else?
I'm good.
Do we have anybody motions?
I would like to move acceptance of the design review permit, DRP 23-006. Conditional, and the conditional use permit and the tree permit.
Any conditions on that?
I do not have any. I am open to suggestions, but I do not have any.
So we have a motion on the table? Do we have a, do we want to do discussion or seconds?
You need a second.
I'll second it. And, and there are the four, I think it's four amendments that were added to it from the-
From the prior meeting.
Prior meeting, I would incorporate those.
Incorporate those.
That is the resolution that you would be approving this evening if you approve it.
Right.
So we have a, we have a motion, we have a second, and so discussion? Did we want to add any conditions on that and friendly amendments to the motion? Anyone?
Well, I think they should lower the rates at the hotel.
Don't know if we can do that.
Oh, really?
I, I would like to-
At least this year, yeah.
At least maybe one weekend.
One weekend.
I would like to make a, a friendly amendment to the motion to have the applicant consider, again, this is a consideration, to explore further fire-hardening options such as, you know, the landscaping, such as the building materials. Oops, wow, that got turned up quick, all right. In addition, I would like the applicant, as mentioned, the applicant said they would look at this, expanding the band on the, on the intersection there to, to make it a wider, you know, expansion, maybe six feet or eight feet or whatever you were considering. But other than that, I mean, I- But other than that, I mean, I think, I like the motion.
And Chris already said he would put the hedges in front of.
That's right, and put the hedges in front of the fence to break up the visualization, which I think is a great idea. Alright, so I think uh.
Maker and seconder, are you agreeable to the friendly?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think with those amendments, I think this is, in my own personal opinion, I think this is a, a great project and. Excited to see it move forward. So with, with that, we'll take a.
A vote.
A vote? Roll call?
Bennett?
Yes.
Chesley?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes. Okay. Good to go. Alright. Thank you, thank you. Now moving on. Go forth and do good work.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And bring the rates down on Memorial Day.
That's a good weekend to choose.
Yeah. Alright, where are we at now? Okay. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Alright, so let's move on in our agenda. Um, we have the informational items, future agenda items. Lucas, did you want to go over those?
Thank you.
Yeah.
So. After the agenda went out, we had a more serious conversation in regards to. The February fifth meeting and five-ten East Aliso Street, which is. Mara and Sarah, they're working on it. It won't be ready by the fifth, but we're anticipating that it'll be ready on the nineteenth. So we're pushing that item from the fifth to the nineteenth. It's not going anywhere. It's just that item won't be ready until the nineteenth. So we're going to end up having two items on the nineteenth. One is Cabin Village.
Oh, that's a big one.
And the second would be the second story addition. Now, as you remember with second story additions, what usually happens with them?
Not much.
We have that discussion initially. And then they take that information and we come back with a resolution. Likely that's what's going to be the case here.
Okay.
Um, the second story additions within neighborhoods have, have typically been controversial.
Yeah.
In terms of the clarity and um. Neighborhood context, the whole gambit of, of design pieces that go along with that, neighborhood context, all that, all that fun stuff. So that's typically when the format, so it's, it'd be good to have that conversation first, recognizing taking a. Basically a sigh of relief that you're not making a determination, you're taking in that information, providing feedback. Almost call it like a mini concept review and then coming back at a later date with a resolution.
Remind me, what is, what are, what's the cross street there on Aliso?
Uh. Five-ten East Aliso, probably.
Oh, it's East Aliso.
East Aliso, so it's, yeah, so it.
Never mind.
Yeah. I couldn't tell you the cross street, the nearest cross street there. But, yeah. It's. All second stories that we've, it'll, okay, so ninety-nine percent of the second stories that I've seen that have come before this body are typically two meetings.
Yeah.
Want to kind of just hash out all the concerns.
And, and it's, it's good for the community too to.
Two, uh, two, yeah, two meeting process for that. So that's what we're looking forward to. That means is that we don't necessarily have an item for the fifth unless this body is wanting to start discussing a specific item regarding housing element. Something advanced planning related, we could probably piece something together to still have a meeting on the fifth, so.
Yeah, um, to make motions to add things to the agenda, is that something that we would just all vote upon or is it something that we talk to you separately about?
Well, as the chair, you can certainly do that, but you would still need a second. Um, and then independently, if there are individuals that are wanting to add items to the agenda. This is the appropriate time to, to discuss that.
Okay. I mean, I, I did have, obviously, we have some from tonight's discussion that we'd like to add at some point. Um, I think a, a reexamination of the sound ordinance. Um, any seconds on that?
So that would be, uh, you would send a request to council to consider it because that chapter's outside of your purview.
Is that title ten?
No, it's title four.
Shoot.
So. Here's the thing though, how many times is this, is the noise ordinance a part of our discussion? Especially regarding commercial related.
So we can make a recommendation to council to have council discuss it?
And, and take it into consideration if they need to do a study or, or, or further action on it, yes.
But we don't need to put it on agenda item for us.
So you could do an agenda item, I just want to clarify that you wouldn't be diving into the, the nuts and bolts of what it would be, it would be. Whether to make the recommendation to council.
We would help you with the boundaries in which you would be able to operate as a commission, as a body.
Okay.
And make sure you stay in your lane.
Alright.
One more thing, um, in uh, Robert Graham's.
Yeah, I wanted to call that out. Yeah, good call.
He suggested that we include a discussion. For the planning commission on Ojai burying its utilities. Is that something that we could add?
It is in title ten.
Okay.
I, I would, I would second Robert's suggestion.
He's not here, so you, you would be the first.
I will be the first then.
Any, any seconds on that?
I'll second that.
Alright, so we got that on the agenda. So that's good.
And then was there a, a second on the noise ordinance piece?
I, I, yes.
Which is to what, recommend to the city council?
Hold on, who were the, who was the first and who was the second? To make sure that we had two.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Alright. And then I have one more, I don't know if we have time for this, but maybe this could be punted to a future agenda item, is to look at outdoor seating and parking requirements.
There was a previous commissioner that was very passionate about it and would constantly, but he, he is no longer. And I think, the issue has not, the issue has not gone away, just to be fair. I mean, in most cases when I'm having conversations before it gets to this body. We are bringing, bringing those applicants or potential applicants up to speed with what the regulations are regarding parking and regarding outdoor seating. So.
So we just need a second on that one. Anyone?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, so.
I have, well, I just wanted, I don't know what exactly it would be yet, so maybe to think about it, but I do think that. You know, Larry's sort of request at the start of the meeting to. Make sure we think about something to move forward with, to, with regards to fire hardening of.
Good call.
I mean, obviously the burying the, the electrical lines is, is a big one. It's a great one.
Yeah.
Um. So I guess I'm just saying maybe somebody that, I don't know if, I don't have, I don't know what specifically.
See, I, I, I would love to do something on this subject. I'm not sure what the scale and scope should be and I, because.
What's in our bailiwick?
Yeah, because I think that's title nine for building code.
It mostly is title nine, however, however, because that stuff is typically handled at the plan check stays where it's, it's a. A matter of what is the current standards that exist within um, building code.
Right.
And how that is addressed, and that is outside of this commission's purview. Unless council provides specific direction, but to be fair, it has not been before this body in the past.
Well, there, I think a way that we could fit, fit it within your bailiwick would be to look at. Design standards.
Yeah, and zones.
Right?
Yeah.
In zones and, and we have the objective design standards coming, you know, this year too, so uh, they talked about. The fire hardening materials, um, that could be a way for you to participate in the conversation. Landscaping, right? Avoiding plants that are known to be flammable. Those kinds of things. It would be, that's a big project.
Or mulch, non, non-living.
Yeah, exactly. So I think, I think there are some spaces that we could explore. It wouldn't be a complete. Um, code overhaul and participation, but there, I, there are spaces that we could have you participate.
Okay.
So discussion, yes, and see where, and we can see where that goes from there.
Yeah, and as far as design standards go, another topic that was brought up tonight is the mission revival, design standards. I'd like to have that as an agenda item at some point, um, along Ojai Avenue.
Wow. What are you talking about?
Well, we, we get it, we get, we got it from our community regarding mission revival.
Everybody wants it?
Yes.
But isn't that going to kind of be addressed a little bit also in the objective design standards in a way?
Well, yes and no. The, the objective design standards are really meant for very specific and narrowed. Um, uses, so multifamily is one, um, and mixed use is the other. This was not that, neither one of those.
We have, we have a design standard for downtown, the downtown corridor, the mission revival, correct?
What might be helpful.
Maybe you're not saying mission revival particularly, but you're saying design standards for some of these other areas.
Well, I, I, I'm saying that architectural style.
Yes.
We have a, there's a piece in the code that outlines that architectural design style in, in our downtown corridor.
That's right.
But it's just there.
That's right.
Are you suggesting we expand?
Yeah, I want to talk about it because we were getting that from the community.
But maybe it's not that we are trying to expand mission revival outside of that zone, but maybe that we're trying to understand what. Should be, is there things that should be required in other areas? I think for me what came out of this was the entry to Ojai. Like, that was a big question. I don't know if that has to be mission revival.
We're like, Ralph Brown is getting upset. So if we could write it in, um, and I appreciate your enthusiasm about it. It seems like this would be a good agenda item for you to flesh out and explore.
Yeah, yeah. That's my, that was my call out, is to add this to an agenda item. Yeah, yeah. And if you have a second, great.
I'm just trying to figure out how to like, what, how rephrasing it, what is it?
So I have, it sounds like I have one, and then if I have a second, I'll, I'll clarify my thoughts with how we can. Wrap this together. I have one.
Okay. Okay, I, I accept.
Okay.
Accept your challenge.
Second, second just means that you're open, you're open to it. It doesn't mean you have to support it when it comes before you.
We have a number of existing design standards. I think what we probably should do is just unpack each of those first. And then really, because the community has. Uh, a lot of, has provided a lot of input regarding a, an item we just heard tonight. Talking through what those standards are throughout, not just the, like the downtown core area, because it's beyond that.
Yes.
And then identifying maybe even the process by which to take it a step further and then what that requires, right? So next steps.
Again, just a discussion.
Let's, let's set the table first. I think that's probably the best way to do it and then go from there, rather than jumping to the end of the book. Stop reading the end, let's start in the beginning.
Got it. Yes, okay. And again, doesn't all have to be for the February fifth? Because that would be a very long meeting.
Yeah.
Because then it would be going until the nineteen, but.
It sounds like everybody's bringing a sleeping bag. So I, I think we've got enough on the plate.
You got a lot.
For us to hold a meeting on the fifth, so just anticipate a meeting on the fifth.
Okay, perfect. And then I, hopefully the February nineteenth, that is, that is staying that, it's not, we're not adding things to that because that's going to be a meaty meeting.
Do you not plan on adding any more than, than the two items that I just spoke about?
Okay.
Um, but obviously, as the chair, you and I will talk offline in terms of.
Yeah.
This, this says that the cabin village is pending. Is it definite?
That is incorrect. It is not pending. It is going on the nineteenth.
It is definite.
At the bottom, it says title ten land and use zoning and charts and outdoor dining, outdoor dining facilities. Is that related to what we just asked to put on the, on the agenda?
If I could just give the thirty seconds on that one, as well as the objective design standards, those were. In a previous council, there was interest in exploring both of those before one of them became a requirement through the housing element. The objective design standards is a requirement through the housing element, through one of our um, programs. So we have to do that within the programmed time period of that eight-year period for the housing element. The second piece was something that we took to council as an opportunity for um, a deeper, what, what I was calling at the time, a deeper dive, still am. Never ended up going anywhere, given what we had going on, but certainly open. With the item we heard tonight and previous items that we've heard um, in previous meetings to open the, the discussion once again, so.
Perfect. Alright, so, moving on.
I have a question, and it's um. And I've, I've heard it discussed, people are sort of waiting for the other shoe to drop. On what's going to take place on the unified school district site across from um. Oh, I R O T, Fox and.
The old Chaparral.
Chaparral School.
Old Chaparral School.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And I've heard, you know, sort of, well, you know, the school can, district can do whatever the hell it wants because that's what the state has said. Um, that, that, that schools don't have to, school districts don't have to pay any attention to local. Um, elected or appointed bodies. Um, and uh. I don't know if we have a role in that, but to me, the most massive thing coming down the pike is, is not the things we've talked about so far. But is what's going to happen to that, to that campus, what are its uses going to be, and are we going to avoid? The kind of planning which was done the last time, and this isn't meant to be a criticism, the people who got elected to the board of education were not. Landscape planners or uh, city and regional planning masters. They, you know, and they said, well, I want this and I want that. And they told a developer who put all those things in it and it was just, it was a terrible plan.
So I'm going to stop you right there, Commissioner Bennett. You're, you're diving into an item that was not on the agenda.
I know.
Here's, here's what I would recommend for this body and for anybody that's, hold on, for anybody that's listening, is they have regular meetings. And I would encourage you to attend those meetings for the, for the time being. Um, and I can't really speak anymore on that, that topic at this point.
I just wondered, do we have a role? This is more of a clarification.
All I can say is potentially. Potentially. Depending on what the proposal is, potentially. That's all I can, I can't go any further than that.
It would be a better offline conversation with Lucas to understand.
Okay.
Our role in, in that.
It's not on the agenda, I can't, I can't go into it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yep. Alright, uh, let's move on. So we've got director's report, so back to you, Lucas. Anything?
Well, there's a lot going on. There's a lot going on. And look. The, the things that you just brought up are items that have been sitting on the back burner and now are coming to the forefront. And it's an opportunity for this body to get their hands dirty, roll up their sleeves. And really see what can be done from this body and taking stuff forward to city council on a recommendation standpoint, right? And obviously, in the future, we'll be having a joint meeting with, with city council. That'll either take place. Um, nearing the end of spring or at the start of fall. That's typically when we have it. It's just a matter of timing.
Right.
So.
Cool. Awesome. Alright, uh, commission member reports? It's just the MAC meetings? Anybody go to the MAC meetings? Alright.
I don't know that there was a MAC meeting because of the holiday season. I think they're kicking back off and I think one was actually canceled because of a lack of items.
You're probably right.
Can I ask about the MAC meetings? Could we appoint somebody from this commission? Um, to be our permanent liaison with the MAC?
It has typically been on rotation.
No, I'm not. I was like, Jamie! I wanted to begin by saying, and I'm not volunteering.
We were all supportive. Are you really? Why are you doing that?
Make someone do it and not be me.
Well, it's not me. It's, the problem is they all know each other because they meet all the time.
They do.
And we rotate people through and it's like, and I, I think what we do is uneven. Um, and I think they are very interested in what we're doing up here in, in the, in the city of Ojai.
Hundred percent.
Having a good report by somebody, uh, of course, prepared by staff.
Well, not wholly prepared by staff. I, I help, I help with the, with the tinkering to make sure that what we're messaging is accurate and. Correct from a process standpoint.
I've just delivered my own reports.
I just, I just went there and winged it.
Oh, my goodness. No, every, you have, you have access to, to me for those.
I did not know that. I just marched out there and gave my own opinion. What was going on?
Well, to be fair, you have all lived each of these items, so you can speak very intelligently about each of them. Well, to be fair, you have all lived each of these items, so you can speak very intelligently about each of them anyway, so...
Okay.
But they're very interested, and I think having a consistent voice and having that person then also have a standing opportunity to sort of say what's going on in the region at this meeting.
Look, the reality is, is we could talk about that as, at a future meeting and maybe assign it quarterly.
That's all.
And then rot, and then rotate quarterly, get a lid of...
Another agenda item.
Well, that one's a pretty simple one, it's like, who wants to do it, and then...
Throw it on the pile.
Yeah, see who...
Who's not here tonight?
Well, I will second Jamie's motion to have it added as a discussion item on a future agenda.
On a future agenda, it sounds good.
All right, perfect. All right, um, and then finally, our city council liaison, our honor roll mayor. Andy, thank you so much.
My pleasure, and just a couple of things, um, so I'm keeping a running list that I'm working on with the city manager about agenda items that we'll be bringing forward. Many will be coming on the twenty-eighth, including burying the utility line. So that's a longer-term project that is going to be possibly attached to, again, a proposal that will come forward with, uh, about a microgrid, that is far off, but that is a longer-term plan. So, a lot of what you said here tonight, I noted in my sort of running Google sheet, um, to bring forward, and so I'm, I'm very eager to work with you guys on those things. And I will say, I did attend the very, the first ten minutes of the OUSD board meeting, which is also tonight. And my, this is all just public, um, I'm very eager to have a, a really solid working relationship with them. And so, we speak regularly, and I highly suspect that we'll have a joint meeting with the council and OUSD soon, and we'll be talking about all the things you brought up. But I, I completely expect a very friendly collaboration on all the things you're mentioning.
I know they're definitely seeking more public input than they did prior.
Yeah, yeah, and, and it's there, and, and this is all just public too, they, they're in the feasibility study of that project. That's what they're, that's what they've announced, and they're in the midst of that, so. Um, we're, we're having some talks and we'll, it'll go forward, but we'll have a real good partnership with them, so I expect you guys will be hearing something soon.
Awesome.
Yeah, and, um, call on me anytime.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you, Andy, appreciate it.
Thanks for staying for the, the whole meeting. Of course.
All right, well, that is it then, I will officially call us adjourned at, uh, eight-thirty, eight-thirty-two? All right, eight-thirty-two, meeting's adjourned, good work.
An hour and nine minutes shorter than last meeting.